Let me show you your uniform, so you don't want to represent.
Nice.
A while ago I proposed to you guys build a botch court. I live at 11283 Lakewood Circle, Silver Lakes. I am the president of the botchi league there. I was nominated, I didn't select to do it, but they nominated me because I go up and speak all the time. Also, I'd like to know what's going on with that now that I proposed it a while ago.
We have not anything to do with that court.
This is not Connecticut where I come from, that's the way they move.
And we have other list items to bring up on discussions with recreational in the budget. As far as us putting a line item in and some hard plans to get a court in. And other reasons they've been trying to look at it. Totally without recreational facilities. Where they would go, whether school would be the place or whether it would be in their respective age.
So gentlemen, tell me the grass you have out in your ball fields, ideally. That's what some leagues play on. It's nice cut, it's like the Fenway park, I call it. So we've gone there at times, sit in the park a lot, when the grass is perfect for the botch. Nice short.
Yeah, and before April left, we were looking at this area behind the back concession stand.
Yep.
It's not the same grass that's on the field.
Right.
But that, Chris, that might be, that could be a potential location because I think the width and the depth is right. And if we can get the right grass, then you really don't have to, I mean, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but do you need to, is it part of official botchi play that you have the borders? Or can you, is it acceptable to play?
It needs to be Bermuda grass.
Yeah, I'm saying regardless of the grass, does it need to be bordered out?
So Ping Pong tells you need the borders because you play off of them.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Right now I have 25 people and when the snowbirds come back, it'll be more like 50.
How many courts do you think that would be needed?
Because I said at least two.
Two, okay.
Because when the snowbirds get back, I got 24 people interested now and then they'll be about 50 when the snowbirds come back. And once that is-
And that's just your area.
Right, exactly, it's very popular. And Anthony was here, he showed me that area over here. And it's fine for one court.
It only fit one, everything, okay.
And you're not requiring it that it be nighttime lit?
Well, not nighttime, but daytime, matter of fact, we usually play first things in the morning. And we're out of there by 11:00. That gets too hot, even in the wintertime or the summertime.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Otch, is there a synthetic they use on those or are they typically grass like that? I'm just saying, I've seen one at Heritage.
They have built it with concrete, leveled it and put astroturf on it, which you need drainage at the ends.
Right, that's what we have in Stony Brook.
Right. That's the way to go. Well, I appreciate your help. Just give me a call, you have my phone number and everything?
Got it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Richard, can Irishmen play?
I'll make an exception. As long, this is the shirts we wear, you gotta wear one of these shirts though.
Bill's gonna get a team up from Robert Pelican, we'll have a little rivalry.
You bring green shirts with the chaperone won't work. Look good? Thank you very much, y'all.
The next speaker we have, Flavia Walsh, Magnolia Lakes, algae and fountains.
I'm just gonna pass out, I'll just go to you, those are the pictures that have been taken for the last week. And I date it with AM or PM time and so forth. So, back on June 23rd, I sent an email out to Elle, and I think it included most of the board members and also Aquagenics in regards to the algae that we're having on the pond that day. I was told that, this was Friday, so I was told that Saturday, somebody from Aquagenics will be in in the morning to treat the lake and to assess it. I'm not sure if somebody was able to come or not on Saturday, I never got, you know, I did ask and I never got, I never heard anything back. On the following Monday, JJ said that he did, went out and did a treatment on it. And he provided, actually one of the pictures there that says Aquagenics was taken by them in the morning. And that is per his email, it says, you know, "In the middle looks worse." But then I went back and I took a picture of the entire pond, which shows completely a different picture. If you, you know, if you're just taking something straight down and then the whole thing's completely different. I was instructed by JJ to turn my fountains off again. This is the fifth time this year alone that I was requested, I was told to, or to just shut the fountains off. And we're not shutting them off for one day, one week, two weeks. I mean, last year was over seven months, no fountains. I know Elle did send an email out requesting two quotes, and that's pretty much all I see. I see requests for going for quotes for the same vendor. Are the quotes coming back? I don't know, but is it being treated besides with the same treat or not? I know on June 26th, she did request it for a quote for the Di quad RX and also to mow away and rake the algae. We did that and really was really helpful last year. Literally, we had four or five workers from Aquagenics go in to the pond and remove the algae because that's what needs to be really done. I mean, treating with the copper, all it does is puts all the algae back to the bottom, then it creates double the amount of algae. And if you see it within two days, I mean, I can mow my lake. I mean, I can differentiate the grass and the lake. The last subject is my fountain that I still have down. The last meeting that I was here with Aquagenics, JJ, he was to go back and retrieve the motor, the missing motor for my fountain. I have never heard back. That fountain is still, you know, on the side of my pond. It needs to have the motor replaced and be put back in the water. Your vendor is the same vendor I have. So if my vendor, which is Aquagenics, which my HOA pays for, is telling me to turn the fountains off because of the algae, then he should be saying the same thing to you guys because it can be different. He cannot tell me one thing and then tell you guys another thing. So it's really missing. I'm really tired of just the quotes and the quotes. And if that's what he needs, I'll go out there, I'll get quotes from all the other vendors. I'll bring it to the meeting, but we need to make a decision. And treating it so slightly right now is just not working. That's all. Any questions?
Chris, are you familiar with this?
After that first day, once you called on the 23rd, and as I understood it, they went out Saturday, did a treatment, and then they were supposed to come back and she got those prices and do another treatment. Whether they did that, I do not know.
I do not know, and I did send an email out requesting if they clean or not on July 2nd to let me know. Because on his email from Aquagenics, he says he was gonna go in and clean the fountains, clean the intakes. And I noticed the air raiders were shut off and they were turned back on, but not my fountains. So do I know if somebody was there? I do not know, but the air raiders were, all of them were off for three days.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm gonna show my ignorance here again. But this has been going on for-
Six years.
Thank you. And we don't seem to be making much of any progress. Is this a case where we ought to get out there in the boat and physically rake that stuff out of there?
Physically could do that. It would take a lot of work, but it would be effective. And we did get a quote from a different source recently on a different treatment method. Just because evidently the same old thing. And it's a little on the pricey side, but we're just gonna compare it to what we got from Aquagenics. And I don't wanna keep pointing the fingers all this way because if it wasn't for the fertilizer and the trash and the things coming from the properties next to the lake, you wouldn't have the problem in the lake. So I appreciate all the finger pointing one direction. But we could do a better job with our litorals and working with them on the drainage runoff and look at the lake as an entire system. But I think right now this state that's in, it needs some kind of treatment and quickly.
It's that $19,000 treatment that I brought up two months ago. And a decision was made to send Elle out and ask for another bid from another competitor. If that was done, I don't know. But I think would it be unfair for even us to mention fertilizer or anything else of that pond without even looking at the water test? And I can tell you, if you even look at the grass area, you can tell that it's not being fertilized at all. And if that's something that you're gonna bring up with the board or anyone to me, then I'm gonna, I'm looking at those water samples as well. And I don't see that, I don't know, do you see that, Tinko? So to tell me or to even make any suggestion that fertilizer has something to do with this algae, it wouldn't be fair, you know, show me. That's kinda how I'm gonna go with it.
And I think what, I'm not gonna speak for Chris, but when, the way I interpret that is, this is a self-contained lake, so it doesn't have the outlets to basically-
Doesn't have any inlets.
Doesn't have any inlets to create flow like we may have in some of the other. So anything that may seep in or the environment plays a little bit different, has a different impact on those ponds that are pretty much self-contained. So I think what we're saying is we have to look at a different strategy for these type of self-contained lakes and do probably a more exclusive, inclusive strategy.
We put in a point system. The last time we went out for specifications and bidding, put in a point system for this very purpose. That if these vendors are not coming in and taking care of the problem, then they get docked. And it was a 10% on the first month pay, 25% on the third, and second, 50% on the third. I think it's time to enact the docking of the pay. Our vendor isn't doing his job, in my opinion. If he believes it's something else, then tell us. I'm not hearing anything from him.
Same here.
I'm not hearing anything. I think what it is, we have to tell him when there's a problem. In my opinion, based on our specifications, it's not the duty of this board or our staff. They should know and tell us. And if it's routine, then fix it. If it's something that's a change order and outside the scope of the work, tell us and give us a price. But we're not hearing either one of those. So I think it's time to turn the screw on the vendor.
And to address the litorals, we have litorals. All of our residents are happy with the litorals. The reason why we have zero litorals is because at one time, the pond was worse than that and a heavy treatment was done, and within two months, they were all dead. And I have come to this board many times requesting planting of the litorals per my DO, which is, and I have never given. And that's the standard that the board set, the guidelines you guys set. And I was okay waiting because it needed to be repaired. But if we're also saying that litorals will help, then you know what? Gonna have to plant it. And if when we do repairs, we're gonna have to redo it again, then we have to redo it again.
But the thing is, is that we need to get a plan for that pond, whether it incorporates moving it up and into the SRF list higher up because of priority or doing it separate, non-SRF. But something needs to be done. But I would not plant any litorals until we address concurrently the issue of the slopes and the erosion. If you're gonna do one, do them both at the same time and do them. Unfortunately, now the water's as high as it's ever been. So we're gonna have to wait anyway. But in the meantime, there are things that can be done as far as aquatic control from the vendor, Aquagenics. But we need to have a plan such that next November, December, when the water levels drop back down, we get in there and fix this once and for all. And she's right, it's got litoral requirements, we gotta do it. We gotta do it.
And if I may, I did get the pricing, it came back, and it was $4,500 for the di quad and $1,000 for the raking, or $5,500. And the alternative treatments that we had, I think were over a six-month period with ecological solutions, was $19,000. Of course, ecological is more a non-chemical-based product that they've been using. And we've tried a little bit of it with good success. Also mentioned, I met with Flavia to talk to her about an all-encompassing way to address the pond, coming up with litorals, coming up with yard drains, because half of that's done. And I told her over the next few months, we would meet with the HOA and talk about all the requirements and where the plants are gonna go and come up with a plan that the HOA and the residents would bless. So that after we do the work, nobody comes up and says, "I didn't expect that, I didn't agree with that." But really get a buying with them and also maybe look at participation with the yard drains, you know, from the HOA.
Well, Tony and I were on the phone the other day and just talking about DOs. And we just happened to pick Magnolia Lakes and went online. There's not gonna be much discussion.
And I'll say this, as the HOA president for Magnolia Lakes, you have my blessing. I'll take it, plant the litorals as per DO.
The DO is definitive. It tells you where you're gonna plant the stuff. So there's nothing to the imagination at Magnolia Lakes. So it's just a matter of giving it to some vendor, writing a specification and saying, "This is what we want." But we need to be doing it concurrently with the erosion control.
Okay, and I just want to address, I think, I believe on February, either the 19th or the 9th, when Elle did give her report, the $19,000, if I recall it, is for a year, not six months, on that specific report. So it's not much of a difference. Yeah, it's $19,000 for multiple treatments to a whole year.
Yeah, that's vessel-based, you know, going out and spraying it.
What is the, is there any-
So have they done any of that?
No. We have the proposals and we have to work on their lake, what's in the budget. And that was originally addressed to the erosion controls, $50,000, is in this year's budget.
Is there any, is it, can we estimate or have any idea on the growth of that algae within a certain time period? So let's just say we rake it and we aesthetically get the pond clean. Do you have any idea of this time of year, the rain, when it might? Because my only concern is that there's a short-term fix to get through. Because the long-term approach, which is the way we need to correct the issue, we're not gonna be able to touch it until next year, or at least when the water levels drop.
I'm not, and I know that, that's why I even mentioned repairing the pond, that's secondary. What my concern, and I can tell this, I personally have two cameras in the back of my yard, so I can actually see it and I can tell you, as soon as I see the algae up, I will call in within a day or two. If you take one week after you spray it, four days to go down, and then a week later, full bloom of the algae. And that's what it does. Right now, the bottom of it, I mean, it's green heavy. And then the top, where you see the fish kills all the way at the end by my gate, that's the color. Within the ones, the pictures that you have. Give it three days, we will be all black, full of flies, smell is horrible. And it's just, it's a two-week cycle from spray, you know, regardless if you spray it or not.
Another alternative is, I hesitate bringing it up, is that we bring in another vendor. And we simply get a second opinion.
So we brought the second-
Just get a second opinion.
Using a different product and a different application, right, and a different look at it.
And Chris, is there, I don't know if it's through FASD or maybe through some of the contacts you have, there's gotta be other communities and other ponds that experience this same type of issue. Is, you know, maybe we can network or try to find a specialist in this area that might be able to point us in the right direction of a true solution instead of maybe relying on local vendors just throwing-
Well, I think it's a water chemistry issue at Magnolia Lakes also. There's some issues up there on that. But going to a separate vendor just to get an alternative opinion on this, I don't think is a bad idea.
That's no problem, I can bring it back and we'll get a treatment done before the next board meeting.
Because we've really gotta get the algae under control before we do anything.
It's within a couple of days, I know. But I believe this $19,000 is not from Aquagenics, it is already from a different vendor.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that.
Yeah, and then we asked Aquagenics to give it a quote on the same exact treatment. That's what I don't know if we received or not.
Well, we did, so we took, so we took the-
We did, over a month ago.
We took the recommendation of one vendor, gave it to Aquagenics to see what their price is to do the same work. And we haven't heard anything?
And I'm gonna go in a limb that it came out to either $1,000 less or $1,000 more. But you can follow up with Elle on that.
I'll tell you where I paid my money.
Mine? You had a comment?
It'll be $1,000 less.
For the record, Michael Tish, we have heard back from two vendors for doing the same type of application. And it is to do something different because for years and years, as she's been telling you, you've been spraying chemicals on it, killing the algae, it just, you know, settles to the bottom and you wind up having fish kills and different things. So what they're looking at doing is trying a biological approach that will actually eat the algae. So, but it's quite a bit more costly than the chemical treatments that you've been doing. But we, I mean, that's the definition of insanity. You keep on doing the same thing and expecting a different result.
It's Einstein.
We've gotta try something different. And it's gonna cost more than the chemical applications that we've been doing. And so we're working, work with Chris to try to come up with, you know, an approach to do that. It is gonna be, you know, quite a bit more expensive, but I think we've gotta do something different.
The other one too, to follow up on that, is that we're part of the Pond Watch program. We're doing the sampling, you know, monthly and taking them in. It might not be a bad idea because we have some favors back and forth with Ernesto and his group. Perhaps an idea may be to bring Ernesto back out, take a look at that pond and say, "Hey, any ideas?" And that would be basically, I would say, no expense.
Okay, yes. I would like an email sent to the board of what's going on. And Flavia, you know, just email me to keep us up to date so we know what's going on. So if Flavia comes back, because we know she will, which is good. And so we know exactly what kind of treatments are being done and if they are successful or if they're not. Thank you.
Hi, Rhonda Brewer with Lennar. I just wanted to get a status update on several conveyance packages that we have currently in. And so I wanted to pass out a tracker that I've been keeping. So at one of the last board meetings, I had requested that a couple items be placed on the agenda for acceptance and they weren't placed on this agenda. So I just wanted to see if I could get some commitments from the board on dates. The first one is Tractel Drainage. So Tetra Tech had signed off on the engineering and we did walkthroughs with P-PAC. This was back in May of last year. We submitted storm videos in April of this year, even though they weren't required, we did submit that. We have not received any legal comments back on our package, which was submitted last year and then again, most recently, May 26th. So I don't know if there's any legal comments, but-
Board wants me to respond or not?
Go ahead.
With regards to Tractel, there were comments last year, there was a number of comments on the Tractel submitted. On the more recent submittal, there are a number of issues that you'll be getting. I thought it'd be easier, but it's more complicated because of the number of documents that are in there. And I should have that finalized by no later than Monday and get that to Chris.
Okay, so you're gonna have legal comments on Tractel Drainage Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to understand the system, you prepare your comments, you send them to Chris, then Chris, what do you do? You send them on, forward them on?
What I do is when Tony's done with his legal review and we have all the documents, I just prepare the agenda with all the background information.
But how does she know what Tony's comments are?
Tony usually copies back with the memo or-
If you want, I can send it to her. I've been saying it to you, I can send it to both at the same time.
That's what I was gonna say.
Both, I think both at the same time. And I think us two responding both at the same time would be a good process. That way, we're not waiting on Gateway CDD to send Tony something that, or Tetra Tech, because sometimes there's a lag there too.
Especially if it requires action on your part.
Yes. Okay, so we'll get legal comments back on Tractel Drainage on Monday?
No later than, yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we established at the last meeting, I believe, that the sandbars are not part of Tractel? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so item number two, Area 9, this is just a matter of information for the board. So South Florida Water Management District had gone out to Area 9 and found that it was in compliance and had sent a letter to Gateway CDD and also to us and asked us to prepare the transfer form, which we did. And just as a matter of information, we sent that to Chris on June 23rd.
Transfer form of what?
For the operating permit for Area 9. And just as an update on that, I talked with Charles-
Is this the one on the west side of the interstate?
Yes, and I spoke with Charles Mann last week. And Lennar WCI is working on getting the requisite access.
I was gonna say, is there a helicopter involved?
No, but they're working on that. They're working on getting the route parallel I-75.
Parallel, okay.
Yes, they're working on that. We had a good conversation.
Well, we're gonna test it Monday because we go out to do samples Monday. And I'm hoping I don't need a half-track to get there.
I have a kayak.
That won't help.
Okay. All right, the next one that I had requested a couple meetings ago to get on the agenda for acceptance was Madderita 2A Roads and Drainage. And so we resubmitted our legal package in response to Tony's comments on April 28th. And since then, have not received any updated comments. And I came back to the board a couple weeks ago acknowledging that everything's done, we've resubmitted, we haven't received any additional comments, and had requested that it be placed on the agenda. We had also followed up with Tetra Tech, Tyler, on the grouting of the pipe. And I have his email confirmation from June 16th saying that that's all done. So I'm here again requesting that it be placed on the agenda for acceptance.
There's no engineering issues, Tyler, on Madderita 2? So it's, what's holding it up coming to us?
I think Chris would have to answer that.
Yeah, I think we need Chris, Chris.
Okay, well-
Chris, what, the question was, what's holding up Madderita 2 coming for approval? Do you know?
2A for the-
I'm sorry, 2A.
I have Tony's memo from 521 that says that the updated ONE report is acceptable, that the status of ownership leasing of the streetlights needs to be confirmed. They are leased through FPNL and we had stated that. And then he asked, "Had the items in the previously noted attached email of January 22nd been addressed?" And we believe that we have, and Tyler's confirmed that the engineering is done, so.
So you aware of anything on 2A that's-
All of my comments, that's the remaining comments. Oh, I know what I said.
Yeah?
Yep.
So are those, are those-
I don't know if I received a response back as to the issues that are listed at the end. And I did, we do have an answer on the streetlights. It was addressed at one of the board meetings. And the last question about the items that were from a while back, being addressed or not, I don't know if I received anything back unless that was the Tetra Tech report.
Are you, was there a new-
Charles Mann responded, and I'm also saying, the items were addressed. Yes, they were addressed. He's confirmed that engineering is signed off. So I have no other evidence that states that we're not ready.
So you're of the opinion that the questions for things that need to be answered have been resolved and there's been no further follow-up?
Correct.
So then it's ready to come to us?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the question is, what do we need to do to, do you know of anything?
Put it on the next agenda.
On the agenda, okay.
Okay, so Madderita 2A Roads and Drainage will be placed on the next agenda for acceptance. And what date will that be?
7/20.
7/20, okay. Great, thank you. Okay, the next one, Madderita 3 Roads and Drainage. So we had resubmitted our legal package back on April 19th. And Tony, I know that you said you were gonna get us back some comments and you thought that you had. I don't have a copy of them, if there is another update from Madderita 3.
I think it was sent out May 23rd.
Okay.
Wasn't that May 23rd or 24th? Yes, 23rd, yes.
I've not received it and I've made several requests, so I think by you copying us both, it'll-
Who'd you send it to, Tony?
Chris, April, Tyler, Lennar, and House, and Mr. Measy.
But you say you haven't received it.
I have not received it.
I'll send it to her right now.
Okay.
Which one, you wanna use Lennar or WCI email?
Lennar, yeah, Rhonda.Brewer.
Oh, I've got it.
Okay.
And you got Tyler's comments?
Yes, we got those last night. Thank you. And then dropping down to Madderita 4 Roads and Drainage. So that's the same thing with, we resubmitted our legal package on 526. So I didn't know if there were any additional legal comments.
Yes, that just went out the other day, so I can forward that to you now.
Okay, great. Okay, and then on one of the punch list items that Tetra Tech, they- Okay, and then on, on one of the punch list items that Tetra Tech, they requested a walk-through inspection. I thought one had been done many moons ago, but Tyler, can you give us a date and we'll make it happen?
Rhonda, with, with this list, this is the kind of thing that you should submit to Chris and/or Tony. And, and, and let them, let them communicate with you internally.
We did not get this list.
So...
I send emails. That's fine.
Yeah, so the walk-through she's talking about, there was two, actually four, I guess, sections of Madderita. Madderita 3, we did a walk-through, I wanna say like in 2015. Madderita 4 for Roads and Stormwater, I think we were holding off for the construction of the backyard swales because that was one that was getting those rear yards built around the lakes. And they were grading that as they were doing the home construction. So we didn't walk it because they didn't build that swale yet. So we just said, hey, when the homes are done, you know, we'll walk it because that's when they were grading at that swale. Vertical was doing the swale, not LD, so yeah, we can schedule a walk-through from that point.
Sure.
Okay, great. All right. And then Casella 1 and 2 Roads and Drainage, so this is another Tetra Tech. So we, we submitted on 516 a resubmit to the engineering and I didn't know if we're gonna get any comments back or if we're good on that.
So Casella 1 and 2, the, yes, we did receive the response. There's an outstanding issue with Casella 1 and 2 about the flowway and the sandbar issue that RWA and South Florida Water Management District were working out. I don't know if there's been a resolution to that or not. I don't think there has been yet. I think that John was working with the enforcement side of South Florida with Mark White.
John being RWA?
Yes, or John Williams of RWA. So I don't know if they came to resolution on that.
Can we, can we do that conditioned? Take everything else but that because that issue is not gonna go away.
It goes away if they dig it out.
I'm sorry?
It goes away if they dig it out.
I mean the other way. It's gotta be fixed, but I, I'm saying, let them argue that till the cows come home. Let's get everything else addressed. And if we can get everything else except for that issue, then we somehow condition it.
And then do we accept all the other tracks and improvements but that track with that sandbar in it?
Well, you actually already own the track. So I mean, that's, that's part of the original 130-foot easement for the now. So it's your track, they made improvements upon it for Madderita 1 and 2. So you're not really accepting the EBITDA track, you're just, I don't know what you're doing here.
Madam Chairman, but I object to sitting through all of this stuff. I think it's totally unnecessary and not appropriate for this board.
But, but we gotta prove it, Bill.
But we're not gonna do it tonight.
Let them take care of it.
Yeah, we gotta prove it. I, I think the issue that is pointing out is that we've got some problems that we gotta get resolved to get these questions answered quicker.
That's not, that's not our job.
Bill?
It, it's not.
Bill, our design criteria improvement manual says it is.
That's not so.
Bill?
Not so.
Bill?
I wrote, I had a hand in writing that. Not true.
I think the point is, is to get updates on these, there's nothing on the agenda that we can...
It would've been, it would've been easier if we'd had it ahead of time, but my point is, is that we've gotta get this stuff resolved. To sit here and have this stuff stalled is, it's crazy. It's crazy. We need to get it done quicker.
And the only reason I'm coming to you is because I do send out email correspondences and I don't get commitments. So that's why, that's why I'm here. I'd be happy to work offline, you know, with the various folks if I could get more timely responses, but I just don't. And so Chris had actually asked me to come in, continue to address the board so that I could get commitments.
Oh, you're the culprit.
There, there is, there is an issue though.
He's done a great job.
There, there is an issue, another issue though, that's along this line though, that we've got to, gotta talk about. Kenny and I spent three hours today.
Who, who?
Kenny and I, driving around. And a portion of it was out in Pelican Reserve. And it's not just Pelican Reserve, it's in general where we're having construction done. And I saw some stuff out there that was immensely frustrating. And I understand it because I've been on your side of the fence. When you put work out for bid and you get these contractors come in, they don't read the King's English very well. And one of our requirements is we've, we have to put in the meters. I just learned today from Kenny. We put in the water meters so that they can use the water to do the construction associated with the home. I saw water meters today that had mud, they had built, what was that, the wood framing on top of them? This is, this, this is ridiculous. And Kenny is very frustrated in that we go out and we tell them one day, don't do it. They turn around and come back the next day and do it again. What we're having to do is sending out a laborer, one of our employee staff, basically as a overseer to see that this stuff is done. We're replacing MIUs that are getting broken. They take the lids off, turn them upside down and they shore it out, as we learned the hard way at the last meeting with Fortaline. Just things that are not right. It's quite obvious that the vendors, and maybe it's even sub-vendors or sub-sub-vendors that Lennar is hiring, they don't give a damn. So what we're gonna do is we've gotta talk about having an inspector coming out there and then we're going to bill you for the services that we run into until we get their attention. It's, it's that simple. We cannot have them tearing up assets. They're just ignoring us. So we need to figure out a way to do that also.
Let me do this, let me get a commitment from Chris and Tony to respond. When she's sending you emails and asking for a timeframe, can we get her a timeframe? Because there's nothing for the board to approve or do on this, so it's, we shouldn't even be discussing it today.
I agree, Madam Chairman, and with all due respect to Ms. Brewer. One of my aggravating, frustrating, irritating aspects is with regards to Tractel, Cypress Grove, that whole area. My first review was in November 2012.
I'm sorry, what's...
My, 2000, November 2012 was my first review when they submitted in October 2012 for Phase 1. Didn't hear anything until about 2014 or 15.
That's when I started with it.
Bear with me, and then, then they've submitted Phase 2, did not submit anything to Phase 1. We said, well, what the heck's going on? So with all due respect, we've had a five-year...
That's the fallacy with our design criteria...
No, no, I'm talking, no, no, they were not, they failed to correct what I had raised way back when. And there are still some deficiencies from their last submitted that they've never even addressed in the resubmit of May 26th, as if they're ignoring it. So I'm having to go back, I have boxes of documents unfortunately. I'm having to go back and review them. So I, I know it needs to be more timely, I respect that, but just to get a little historical perspective, especially as to Tractel. It's been five years, with their lack of response for a couple of years.
I understand everybody's frustration and I appreciate yours too, but when, when this comes to us today like this, there's nothing the board can do. So we've got other agenda items that we need to get to.
Well, I think you did it though. You asked for timely responses, which is what I've been asking for. So I think, I appreciate that. The last one I just wanna ask about is the Prado Utilities.
On Monday.
On Monday, okay.
And I just, yeah, I just wanna make a comment. I mean, coming out of our board advance and we had staff in this board, one of the things we talked about was driving efficiencies and, and process improvement. We were putting a lot of responsibility on Chris to drive these improvements. But when we run into issues, whether it's process-related, communication, I mean, we need to figure out how our partners and extended members of staff can help us solve problems outside of this meeting. So Rhonda, if you and Tony and Chris, if you're running into issues, someone needs to, needs to call a meeting. You guys get together, throw, you know, your correspondence back and forth. If you have to, you know, if you've gotta meet, meet. If not, if there's a, a streamlined the process that either Chris can drive or Rhonda or you or Tony can come up with something. You know, whatever's happened in the past, we need to make sure we understand it. But this board is trying to move forward to be more efficient and more productive. And this is not a representation, a good representation of, of our time. We should be getting something from Chris on the agenda that says, Tractel, staff approves, engineering approves, recommendation board approves. Attorney approves.
If this would go out, let's say, a suggestion, this would go out the week of when we set the agenda with a copy to Chris, Tony and Tyler. CC us, that solved a lot of problems.
Yeah, I don't even wanna see that. I want this resolved before it even comes here, unless there is an issue where Chris says, Lennar's pushing for this to be accepted. You know, I do not accept because of these issues. We need board support to not accept. I mean, and, but I expect Chris as the district manager and work with our engineers and, and legal to resolve these issues prior to it come here. I don't wanna talk about it unless there's, there's a decision that we need to make. This is a waste of our time. We have staff for this. And it's nothing against you, Rhonda, I'm saying, let's all try to work together outside. And I understand your frustration.
I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have one more speaker and that is Irene Mengen, Mangen, Farrington Way. We'd like to talk about streetlights on Griffin.
Right, this should be an easy question. I emailed a few of you and didn't hear back, so I figured I had to come to the meeting to get the question answered.
Because we didn't know the answer.
Ah, okay. What type of streetlights are you putting on? How far from the street will they be? Will they be similar to the ones that are already there? Just wanted to get some input on what you're doing with the streetlights. They were approved, so I wanted to know what type and how.
Got an update on that. I talked to Bentley Electric this morning and the permit has been approved by Lee County. So they gotta go down, pick up a copy of the permit to start the work. They're gonna be installing nine lights and as I recall, they're on the backside of the sidewalk.
Where the, where the others are now, they'd be spaced pretty much the same?
Similarly, yes.
And are they the same type of light?
Yes, they are. And the only difference is, is that they will be LED and a part of the contract is to take the existing 18 lights that go all the way down to Griffin Drive, take those out and replace them with LEDs.
LEDs as well. But they'll be the same height and everything as the ones that are there?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's, it's basically a match.
Okay.
So you shouldn't have any, any issues?
No.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I've been spoke with Bentley also this week and they, I mean, we've ordered materials. There's eight to 10 weeks before materials come in, so that, that's what we're waiting for now. We've processed the order, so as we get closer and we get information from them as to, you know, when the materials arrive and when we anticipate installation, we'll all update the board at that time.
Mike, I forward you guys a copy of the, I just got it before it came over. This is the, the permit approval that Bentley got.
Electrical permit, right.
I'm sorry?
His electrical permit.
Yeah, that's correct. What we need to do is verify that where it says owner, it's got WCI communities, we need to make sure that that's GS-CCD. And I don't know, Bentley just got mixed up when they filed the permit, but anyway, that's the only thing I saw that was on it that need to be corrected.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. There are gonna be some new lights installed, are there not?
Yes, sir.
And do we know precisely the location of the, of the, of the new lights?
The, the thought, Bill, was is that they were going to space them the same spacing of the other lights, which is about 300, 330 feet, starting at the Silver Lakes Terminal Light and then going on down all the way to 82. And the way they estimated it, and I agree with them, was nine lights.
Okay, but you didn't answer my question. Do we know precisely where each one of the new lights is gonna be installed?
Physically?
Yes, physically.
No, I'm assuming what they'll do is go out and get a tape, stretch it between them and put a stake. Because they're gonna have to put a, a pad in, put in a pull box. The power's gonna come from the opposite side of the road. They gotta bore under Magnolia Lakes Drive and then they're gonna shoot across Griffin Drive. That was the last I heard anyway.
You know approximate spacing?
300, 330 feet. I believe that's what Silver Lakes is right now, that ballpark.
So there's a standard?
Yeah.
Is it possible to get a little map with the X on it, like we do with other things?
What would be even, what would be better is just to get with Bentley as soon as, Chuck went to the emergency room last night, so I couldn't talk to him. He's sick. I think the easiest thing to do is we get out there with a lathe, with a flag, and we stake the nine lights where they're gonna go.
I don't know who we is, but it ain't me.
I'll work with Mike and Chuck, we'll get it done. So everybody can see where they're going.
District engineer.
Hello. For the record, my name is Tyler Wainwright, I'm with Tetra Tech. I guess just give you an update on a couple of projects that are going on in the community. First one being the lakes. So out of the first five lakes, four of them are substantially complete. The last one, which is Lake 86, which is up off of Griffin here in Cypress Cave, that's the last one, which the walk-through for that is actually tomorrow morning. So hopefully tomorrow morning, all five will be substantially complete and then we're just working on punch list items.
How's the washout repair, please?
I think it's going pretty well. They, I mean, they found different reasons why there were different washouts. Some of them irrigation-related, some of them were, I think, construction-related, some of them, it was just a lot of water coming and then they went back and put some stone instead of backfilling it with dirt. So each one were a little bit different, but overall, I mean, they're, they're doing good repairing them all.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
I drove in Griffin coming here this afternoon and on that key, there are all kinds of equipment there. Looking to someone who is not a professional in that business, that they're nowhere near done. Is that just an illusion?
Uh, no, no, you're correct, they're, they're not done yet. They still have to demobilize all their equipment, they still have to finish restoration of that staging area. So there's definitely still work to be done. The lake bank restoration part is, we'll find out tomorrow, but hopefully substantially complete. But as far as the demobilization of the staging area, they still have to do that.
Thank you.
But I mean, that'll, that usually takes them about a week to, to wrap that up.
Did they drain that? Barched? Put a bomb?
Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. So also another item, we, we being us, Gateway staff, Supervisor Tinkle, we all met with the folks from Portaline and Zinner last week to try to resolve the outstanding issues that we have. Try to resolve the outstanding payment to Portaline. I think the meeting was pretty successful. I mean, I think both sides mutually agreed on most items. There's a few hangers that we are working out, but overall, I think both sides are pretty close. I guess is a fair way to put that.
Are you gonna give us a brief on what you agreed to or so we can get a general direction?
I don't know if those two individuals over there want me to, but I can, I guess.
I wasn't there, so I'm not sure what was agreed to. I don't believe, I don't know if anything was agreed to.
We, we didn't come to any concrete agreements, I'll put it that way.
Well, we, we agreed that we weren't going to come to any concrete agreements.
Thank you.
What we did...
It does sound like a productive meeting.
Well, we did, I, I know one thing, as a rookie to this whole deal, I learned a lot that I hope to hell never, ever happens on a project here again like that fiasco. I was ready to go into that meeting hunting for bear. And when it was over, I felt like I was the bear. There were things said by Portaline and Zinner of things that were done by, let's say, people here.
That were here.
That were here, that are here, that are contrary to what, as a resident and an interested citizen, I had any idea was going on. But anyway, I'm of the opinion right now, based upon what we came out of the meeting, that we need to issue a certificate of substantial completion to them on the basis of the First Amendment that we signed in August that stipulated a audit. And as I understand it, I've talked to Leslie and she has confirmed to me that all the billing-related issues on the audit have been corrected. I haven't had a chance to talk to Kenny, but I'm gonna put him in a hot spot here in a second, that all the non-billing, construction-related, and I'm talking about something that's got 6,000 entries. This is every meter and they have a listing, no problems in which case, no action. That they had, a lot of meters that had actions. My understanding is, according to Zinner at that meeting, every one of those have been addressed. And if that is the case, then I'm of the opinion, we should issue a certificate of substantial completion post-dated to somewhere around September 14th, 2016. Now, that has ramifications. And the ramifications are, it starts the warranty clock, okay? We have a warranty for one year. Come to find out that I guess within the last two, three, four, six months, we have negotiated or we have received from Zinner a warranty that gives us, correct me if I'm wrong, 10 years on all parts at the full value, but it's 10 years from the date of shipment. So what we're waiting on them from, for, from them for is the date that we put in there as to when that warranty starts so that we know when that 10 years is up. What that means, and Zinner made it perfectly clear to us, and they were straightforward and we're gonna be straight back. They will stand behind... they were straightforward, and we're going to be straight back, they will stand behind every component of that for ten years at one hundred percent of the value. After that, we have another eight years-
Ten.
Ten years, I'm sorry, ten years at staggered dollar values. So the closer you get to the twentieth year, their payment percentage gets smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. That then takes us and covers us on my fears of us accepting these, this contract is substantially complete, knowing that we continue to have, as Kenny presented at the meeting, we're not having a decrease in the number of failures of MIUs, we're having an increase. But they're standing behind it, and they're paying for them.
Madam Chairman. This, this is incredibly important and expensive, and to, again, try and do this at this board table verbally offends me in a lot of ways.
Well, Bill, what Tyler wanted to do is Tyler, and I intervened in it, Tyler wanted to bring this to the next meeting. While it's fresh in everybody's mind, I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware at the next meeting what's coming, so that we don't then delay it to the next meeting.
Well, it's probably going to be delayed. If, when Tyler brings it, I'm going to insist that it be in writing. I want to see the details and not sit here and-
Bill, we're getting all the details. We've got the details.
So it'll be on the next meeting?
But, but the point is, I want to make sure that you all understand what happened. The question was, what happened in the meeting, and that's what we're bringing up.
Well, that's, that's good. But you, may I remind you that as of three weeks ago, not all the meters were installed yet.
All they installed now.
Now, hold it, Bill. We've got to watch this, Bill. We entered into a contract with them, the First Amendment, that drew a line in the sand. Those meters that were not installed have nothing to do with this contract with Porta Line. We separated that out. That has nothing to do with that whatsoever, and we can't even bring that up as an issue. We have already stipulated to that.
You might as well be talking Swahili to me. I don't remember anything like that. What I do remember and have in writing is that this contract was supposed to be a turnkey operation, and it has been anything but.
Bill, I am on your side. I argued that like crazy at that meeting, and I was told things that curled my hair. And I'm telling you, from an engineering perspective, I don't believe we can go down that road.
Well, you'll have all of those, you'll have it in the detail, and you'll explain why.
Yes, ma'am. And we had the meeting last Thursday, so agenda items will do last Tuesday.
Right, I understand.
Practically, I could not bring you a written description today.
Couldn't bring it.
I just wanted to give you an update, say, listen, we met last week. We'll be coming back with more detailed information, but as far as this meeting, I mean-
The issue of compensation, because I authored a report a year and a half ago, trying to get compensation back. And I'd go up San Juan Hill with the Sabers rattling to fight for that. I'm telling you right now, there's a Gatlin gun at the top of the hill. I'm not going up it. We're going to lose. What I heard at that meeting, we're going to lose.
You are one person, and I respect you, and, but you can't make that decision-
I understand that.
-for the rest of us until we see all of this business in writing and, and reflect and the-
I understand, Bill.
... and the amendments, if you're referring to.
Read, because you signed it. Read Amendment Number One closely. Read it closely.
Will you provide that with the details that you're going to bring to the board, so that we all get a chance to review it?
Yes, ma'am. We will clear the copy of the amendment.
Now, the other thing is, is the final dollar value we got from them today, which we can go in ahead and process next meeting, is the final payment amount of ninety-eight thousand dollars and some change. We thought it was up around a hundred and twenty thousand. When it's all said and done, the final payment amount is about ninety-eight and change.
We're supposed to be happy with that?
Well, I guess I'm happy if it was compared to a hundred and twenty.
That's what I meant, supposed to be happy with it.
It feels like a game, but it doesn't feel like one.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah. But I just don't see, and I was the one that raised the stink. I just don't see there's a road to go down to pursue this any further.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am, just a couple of the projects. Storage facility, we've been working with Mr. Tisha over there on a couple of layout design issues and trying to get everybody on the same page before we submit for final permit to the county. So that is moving forward. Girl Scout building, we are moving forward with the PD amendment. And just one other item I just wanted to mention, just because I was thinking about it when I was writing down what I was going to talk about, was this year, we did a whole bunch of stormpipe cleaning throughout Stony Brook and Silver Lakes. I don't know if that was discussed at the last budget meeting, but if you did want to continue that, I think it would be a good idea. My recommendation was to continue that. In other communities. So just to bring that up, so it's on everybody's mind. And that's all I have.
I got a couple there, Mark, for you. Tyler, where are you on the Phase Two SRF Facility Plan Contract Price Proposal?
We submitted that to Gateway on May twenty-third.
Who's got, Chris, do you know where we're at on that to bring before the board? We need to get, you've not seen it?
I got a heart copy over there, I can hand it to you.
Okay, we need to get that, because we need to get that work going on Phase Two of the SRF. The other one is the, I don't know to what extent you're involved in it. Go back to the Girl Scout building. Who gets notified on, or who has to be legally notified? There's rumors flying over there in that area. Is every property owner and resident of Pinecrest receive a letter, or is it just their HOA?
HOA.
It'll be in the radius, say, everybody, there's a zoning change to county, there's a radius. If you're within so many hundred feet, you get-
So that it is individual homes?
Well, hold on, you kind of apples and oranges here. When we do the PD amendment, there are three entities that have to, in order to process it administratively, instead of going to a public hearing, meaning just process by county staff, we have to get the buy-in of three parties, and Gateway's one of them. It's the three adjacent parcels. One is the church, one is the Fun Park, which Gateway owns, and the other one is the HOA. That was the determination that the county made agreeing it to process administratively. Now, whether the adjacent neighbors receive notification is, yeah, they're probably going to, but that's a different story.
I'm hearing that neighbors are contacting the county, and the county is telling them that they will individually, if they're within five hundred feet, have to receive the letter. And I'm trying to figure out who's on first, which one's correct.
They may receive a notification, but yes, they probably will. I think they do receive notification. In order to process the PD amendment, the parties that have to-
They're not the approval loop, is what you're saying.
Correct. It is the HOA.
Have we, have those notifications gone out to the, to the church and the HOA?
No, sir, I don't think anyone's officially contacted them yet.
And relative to road turnover, which is going to come up in a minute, you're not involved in that at all?
Which road? You talking about Gateway to county?
Uh, no. WCI to Gateway.
WCI to Gateway, my involvement has ended. We're good.
You're done. Engineering-wise, you're done. Okay. That's all I hear.
Thank you, Tyler. District Council.
On road, meeting with John Fardima on Monday, had to push the meeting back, and I'll be handing him a number of signed documents, the deed, the agreement, mile hours, surveys, and we'll go over checklist in case there are other items that we need to take care of, so we can move along. I don't know this-
So we're getting close?
Yeah, and I'll find out the status of the WCI transaction. Apparently, that's still not resolved as to the form of the deed for the WCI segments, but I'll find out from John. At the same time, I'll ask John about the status of the, what we pondered and proposed to him of the, as to the lake bank restoration project not needing compensatory letorals, and John has not finalized his opinion on that yet, but I'll ask him that on Monday when I meet with him.
What's complicated this significantly is we have gone out to other areas, and what we have been told by the county as what we can't do, or better yet, what we have to do, is not what they're telling other communities.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. And so I sent-
I can't believe.
So I sent a letter to the county asking for a clarification, because it's not good when us and our staff are being told X by one and Y by another. That, that can't happen. That cannot happen. And especially to the extent-
They can do it. It can happen.
No, it can't happen. No, not where I come from. It don't happen. The issue is, that's bull.
You've been in Florida longer than-
If the county, I am, Bill, you're right, but I'm getting there. The issue is, this, this'll go political. There is no way in the world they can sit here and tell other communities, and CDDs and HOAs in here, the exact opposite of what they're telling us we have to do. They told us in that meeting downtown with Fardima and his staff, book chapter and verse, you will do the maintenance, you will comply with the DO requirements.
That sounds like a legal-
They're telling other ones out there, you can change the DO requirements, and hardened surface means something different, but you just don't call it what we're calling it. It might be a duck, it might quack, it might do all those other things, but you call it something else, and you get away with it.
So you'll get clarification?
We're going to get clarification, all right.
John Fardima at the meeting, they went outside and talked for a few minutes, came out, and they, and once again, he's not opined on it finally, but then I've-
But that's the compensatory issue.
The compensatory letoral issue. I've dealt with John for a long time, so I'll ask him on Monday.
That should be pretty simple, get that in writing, and then have it validated by-
It has major ramifications, and here's why. We have asked and we have charged both Tetra Tech and staff to try to come up with a lesser product.
Sure.
A more cost-effective product. Well, one of the options of coming up with that cost-effective product, an option that is being used in other places, is not in accordance with what they told us we could do. So we need to know what is fact and what's fiction.
I think that's a process of getting clarification from the staff about that other process, saying, hey, guys, we saw you allowed it someplace else. We'd like maybe to do the same thing. And so I think that's, that's a good conversation to have with them.
Without a non-compliance letter after we do it.
And again, if they say, hey, you can do what they did, then we're good. I want to think the validation hearing is August eighth, and so-
The what?
Uh, validation hearing is August eighth, and just keep it posted.
Where?
Courthouse.
You?
Yes.
Anyone else?
A bunch of folks.
You, you've got to testify.
No. Engineer, financial advisor, manager. And that's all for now.
Couple others for Tony. We've got to get a resolution on this linear park issue as to what we own and what we don't own, so that we can get back and address. I felt sorry for that gentleman sitting here. We've kicked this can down the road on this botchy deal for two, three months. This is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. We need to fix that. And get, if we have to, get a landscape architect in here or a park expert in here just to be sure enough that if we're going to put it over at the swimming pool park, that we put it in an area that is long-term in our best solution.
Well, I wouldn't approve anything that's just that odd.
Madam Chairman, are we not our district council?
Yes, we are.
But we got to get that-
I'm not sure.
I'd do Fun Park, but I wouldn't do-
Well, the reason you won't go to Fun Park, you're going to have all those neighbors over here, because they don't want to hear any part of that noise.
That's botched, though. There's no noise.
Well, I think, I assume we would do both, but anyway.
They'll be speaking Italian, and they won't know what's word.
I hadn't thought about that. You're right.
Unless they have the Irish team.
The other one, roads. We're working with, I talked to David and-
David Caldwell.
David Caldwell. And I believe what we need is, we need to have a meeting between us, Tetra Tech, if they're, to what extent they're involved, staff, obviously, to go over the turnover of these six roads. We have hit-
From WCI to-
From WCI to the CDD. We've hit a snag. And the snag in English, because if you get him, I don't understand it.
I put it in English.
It's not English. The issue is, is that apparently some of these roads are in tracks that are in HOAs that have, what's the word I want?
Issues.
Conditions.
Issues. Correct.
That would, let's say, potentially limit us, that if we took them over, they could limit us on what we do on signage, on lighting, on landscaping in that track. To me, we go to, I don't know any HOA in Gateway, that if we're taking over the road, and we consent to take over the road, and it takes it off their, out of their pocketbook, would sign anything to release those conditions on that road. So what we need to do, in my opinion, and I think Tony agrees, is if we can sit down with David and a joint meeting to find out what we need to do to get these roads in a position for those first six to turn over.
And so we need the details of that.
Oh, yeah, no, I think you already have a memo, and it may have bored you to tears.
I want to get the consensus of the board, that the board will allow us to set that meeting, and get that going to get this road deal done.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And again, there was initial memo I did back in January tenth, and then a follow-
Fourteenth?
Of two thousand seventeen. And then they made a recent memo in February, another memo in April of this year with regards to that. And WCI's position is, my concern is, just briefly, that there are a series of deed restrictions and covenants and declarations that, in my opinion, encumber some of these roadway segments and are problematic in that regard, and need to be addressed. WCI's response was, you have taken roads in the past subject to them, so take these roads. My response was, I don't believe we really have, and we have that issue pending in Pelican Preserve, by the way, where I disagree with the assertion that Pelican Preserve Boulevard is subject to the community declaration. Michael and I have exchanged some emails on that, and that leads to the other issue that came up. So that's what we need to work out.
We need to get this worked out.
In fact, on some of these, the Platts dedicated the roadway to the HOA, and so we need to have the HOA release that dedication. And there are those items to be cleaned up, and I think it's a great idea to have the, a meeting.
And I think those six pretty, pretty well could be cleaned up fairly easily.
I'd like to take care of the Pelican Preserve first.
We get these-
I don't know if there's an issue with that. I don't know if there's an issue with that Pelican Preserve, because, again, my brief review, as an aside, is that the Pelican Preserve Boulevard is not subject to the community declaration.
I think the meeting's a good idea.
Going on. We have another complication that I learned last week. I were getting, was getting phone calls.
I thought we were on district council business.
We are. This is, this is legal. This is for Tony. This is for Tony.
Are you the attorney now, attorney in waiting?
Can I do that?
Yes. Well, the Florida bar may not appreciate that.
No, Bill, what it is, it's a legal issue. Have come to find out, a couple of weeks ago, I've been getting phone calls from residents wanting to know why Commerce Lakes Drive East look like you're going into Appalachia. Has anybody drove down there in the last couple of weeks? Grass was only two feet high. What has happened, come to find out, that the Property Owners Association down there, Worthington Office Park dissolved six, seven years ago. And one of the property owners down there, in teleflex through their management association, has been free, gratis to all the people that live down there, mowing the grass. And they finally said, enough is enough. We're not going to do it for everybody for free. So they stopped doing it. Well, apparently, they came in to April, and I'm glad she's not here now. She, on her own, elected that the CDD would take over those, and we would pay for doing it through a contract amendment with Manscape. I about came unglued when I heard that. You don't do that kind of stuff. So the issue is, the problem is, we have Office Park at Worthington, Commerce Lakes Drive East, no POA. We have West Link's Drive and West Link's Corridor, no POA. Fairway Lakes Office Park, no POA. And all of those need to be fixed. My solution was, it suggested to Tony, we bring the, I'm sorry?
Turn off their life.
We did that. Unfortunately, that's not the solution. The issue is, I believe what we have to do is to bring those owners of that land into a meeting. They've got two options. One, they recreate a POA, and I'm telling you right now, with, where I'm hearing, talking to Fairway Lakes Office, they can't get the votes to even do it. What I think we need to do is something that, along the line of what we did to Town Lakes Office Park years ago, when the Simmons deal happened to them, we bring it into the CDD, and we set them up as accounts oh, oh-nine, oh-oh-ten, or oh-ten, oh-eleven, oh-twelve, and we absorb it, and we just bill them.
So this is something that staff will work on and bring forwards to a board meeting with backup?
We need to test the-
We need to have a meeting with those people to find out to what extent. Bill, you've been here, what happened was that? Heard a noise. Bill, you've been here as long as anybody. What was the-
No, Margaret's been here longer.
Margaret's been here longer. What was the agreement, and maybe even it was done before you two, what was the agreement that we developed, and who's got it with Town Lakes Office Park? I have no idea what we agreed to do for them that we bill them seven thousand dollars a year for in assessments.
I don't believe there's anything in writing. It's just that we agreed to take on that responsibility, and they agreed to pay for it through-
No contract.
Assessment, that's correct.
Pete, Pete Dorr-
We were saving legal fees.
Pete Dorr do that? Yeah, okay. We can't do, we can't operate that way on a, on a higher scale. We can't do, we can't operate that way on a higher scale.
Okay, but this.
The issue is, we need to figure out how to solve this problem.
That's what we have staff for.
But in the issues that we have, this is not the most important at the moment.
And this is what we have staff for.
Bill, it is to the people that drive down there, and there's no grasping.
What might be a possibility is if the board authorizes Chris and I and Steven and Tyler, and Michael, if necessary, to coordinate a meeting, get the contact information from Mr. Tinkell, coordinate a meeting with the various property owners, one group at a time, or maybe collectively, however we decide is appropriate, to address the issue, you know, first tell them, here's the issue, these are possible solutions, and work through that. It's gonna take a while. So I think if we can get that authorization from the staff and the board to do that.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
And the last one I have with Tony is, is that, as you know, we had our workshop, and one of the items that came out was this records retention deal. And Joe Diserbo has sent to us since the meeting a copy of a resolution that he used. I did a little researching, because I had some question, talking to staff, as to the applicability of.
319.
119. We are subject to 119, which is basically what Joe Diserbo said. The issue is, is that I believe we have, contrary to a little bit what Joe said, there's two positions that, as I read 119, we have to come up with. We have to come up with a RLMO, RMLO, RLLOM, a position, that's essentially, I guess, Chris, Diane is gonna be going to a school for that.
Or custodian.
No, not custodian. It's another one. It's another name. And then there is the need to have a resolution for a custodian, which, as you recall, Joe suggested we have Chris. But if you read that 319.
119.
I'm sorry, 119.
No problem.
If you read that 119, there's some stuff that we kind of just failed to do, and it's been in effect for over a year, that we need to get going. And I think what Chris is gonna do is take what Joe sent, and then probably work with Tony in creating a resolution for our next meeting to do those. But there is detail in that 119 of how we handle, for example, as Joe told us, and Bill, you missed it, we have to post out there on the door as you come in, who are custodian officer.
You're making more problems than you're solving, Ed.
Bill, I'm telling you what the law is. That's what they tell us we have to do.
You know the difference between de jure and de facto? I'll explain it to you sometime.
Oh, Chris and I did talk about this, and I know that he's working on this, so.
Yeah, and one other aspect too, to keep in track, and I think Chris is aware of it too. The state of Florida has adopted, I think, the GS4 public records retention policies that are applicable to local governments, and so we have to follow those also, as far as how we dispose and retain.
Anyway, we have a sample draft form of resolution that Joe's special district used, and we need to modify that, but it's a little more complicated than Joe told us. It brings in this other deal, and I guess Diane is registered in September to go to a workshop on doing this stuff.
Yeah, we've already placed our public records information to contact her on the website. We just need to put a plaque up and we'll write a resolution to the next board meeting. Sounds good.
Yep.
That's all I have for Tony.
Thank God.
That was for Tony?
Those were all legal. They're all legal.
District manager.
I was gonna give you an update on the lake bank restoration, but Tyler stole my thunder on that.
He did.
Over the next two weeks, they will be doing cleanup, and also repairing those washouts and putting sod in the staging areas. I put some notes down about training I did in the Ford Association Special District's annual conference. It was very solid, and I'd recommend it for any staff or board member. You can learn a lot in a short amount of time. And we're bringing some of that information back. We're using it to get some quotes on our services, and also take advantage of some of the resources they have.
Hey, Chris, how often does, how often does FASD meet or?
They have quarterly meetings that rotate around the state, and then they have their annual technical conference, and then they have training to become a certified special district manager, or get training to be a board member, and they do that coincidentally with the legislative session in January.
Okay.
This year, and that's five days, but their technical conferences, three days, and the quarterly meetings are just day. The last one was held at the Lehigh mosquito control.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Public records. I was just looking to see if I had any questions, and I don't think that I do. If I do, I'll save them for next Wednesday. Utility manager.
We got public works.
We do?
You faked email.
That's fine.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility manager.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
Just want to start off with, we are addressing lift stations now. We are putting them, submitting them to Lee County through the GIS off, addressing office, so that we have a actual address for every lift station we have, and we're matching it with the FBL bill. And it kind of goes along with our insurance reporting, and all the documents that we report into our website, that we can, and the more information they have, the better they, better off we are. We can address every single lift station and asset in our system. We have started doing that, I think we're at five, I think we're at five, five stations now. We're gonna get across all of them. Sampling and reporting for the irrigation wells. Carden has been doing this for, I think, 20, 25 years, I believe is what it is. We are gonna take this over, and we're gonna start doing the sampling and reporting all on our own, through the district. We'll be pulling chlorine samples, reporting the data to Southwest Florida Water Management. The initial cost, we have to buy the actual sampling equipment, which is $375, and then a sampling fee of $100, so we're saving money just on that. But we are taking that over as of July of this year.
Is that accurate? We've been short, is it $550 per month?
$550 a month.
Yeah.
And basically, they go out and just check the water level, pull a chloride sample, and take a reading, and we go out there every day, check the wells anyway, so we figure we could probably save at least $350 a month if not more than a house. It's just one of those things we can take back, and we're looking at a couple other areas too, where we can claw some of that back.
Yep, that's great.
And the Commerce Lakes Daniels Lift Station is done completely, finally, over, fenced in, for a total cost of $54, $54, $464 total, with $2,000 to install the lime center rock and level it out. Mr. Tinkell, we saw that today, it is completely, it's, we got a brand-new station, it's completely secured.
Do you have a camera with you when you go and do those things, that you can take little pictures so the rest of us can see what Mr. Tinkell's doing?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I wanted to go, before I go into.
It's fine.
To, excuse me? The training for, we have a excavating train's course. This was more geared towards, for our guys, for Dan and Isaac, it was more geared for, when we have a break, or we're doing any kind of major utility work, we can get out there and stage it, do traffic control, locate, that sort of thing. And we sent Dan and Isaac there. The course was at Benita Springs, and they took a lot away from it, it really helps with them, especially for the main breaks. If we have a forced main break or anything like that, we have to get out there and get traffic under control, start staging the area, where we're gonna put our contractors, how we're gonna go about doing that. And they both took a lot, took a lot away from it, they learned, they learned a good deal on that one. So that was a really good course for them. And then I went to do the Pelican Preserve, and I want to say, it's not just Pelican Preserve, this is Hampton Park, Timber Lakes, and pretty much anywhere we have construction going on that we are finding with these issues with the meter boxes. And we're finding them upside down, full, completely full of dirt, mud, you name it, we find it. The sewer, the sewer pads are really, really starting to really concern me now because of all the rain. We have, with the construction going on, you have a, about a four-foot section along that sidewalk that is completely full of water all the time, at all times. And when they're moving these sewer pads to move equipment in, moving it back, if that line gets exposed, we've got I and I going right into our system, all day long. So we're, what I've had to do, what we initially did was, we went out to Pelican Preserve with all four, put all four of us out there, and we just swept the area, I mean, from top to bottom and went across. We got across 27 construction sites, we found 13 problems. Meter lids upside down. We didn't find anything, we didn't find anything broken, but what we're finding is that through the course of about five to six months, after we find an issue, we're starting, the MIU will start to fail. The battery, the cables have become separated, it's not reporting. So I can't, you can't say, well, this is a problem five months from now, how am I gonna, you know, how am I gonna deal with this? Because if that battery has sat upside down for, maybe it just returned over an hour ago, maybe it was sitting there for three days, and nobody saw it, and nobody cares, it gets flipped over, gets tripped, somebody walks across, they run it over with their truck, I mean, there's just all kinds of scenarios that we're finding out there.
Is this being reported to Lennar, their?
It's been, it was reported, we had this problem with Matarita, when they were building Matarita and Casella, and they built specific triangular cases to go over top of the meter boxes to box them out. But with the scale of what's going on with Pelican Preserve, it's not being, what we do is, I send, I send one of our guys out there, he finds any issues, he takes a picture of it, matches it with the, with the address, we document it, and whatever issues we have there, we fix right away, so we don't have to go, start chasing, calling people, we take care of it. Then I bring Mary in with her equipment, and she tests it and makes sure if there's any issues with it, then it'll go to Lennar. But say, we've had this issue with pretty much all the construction sites since I've been with the district, with this problem. And I got, we documented everything, pictures, the whole nine yards. And say, we have to have one person on staff every day, go out there, every day, and go over that site, and I'm making them changes at times, so he'll go in the morning one day, and the next day he'll go in the afternoon, and we're going to Pelican Preserve, Hampton Park, Timber Lakes right across the street here, and Hammont Cove up at the top end.
Kenny, is there a reason we can't be compensated for that?
Not that I, not that I can.
Tony, what do we need to do? Why can't we prepare a time sheet?
All the WCI people know.
I'm sorry, I brought it up earlier, they knew what we're talking about, that's why they left. My deal is, is that I don't care what it is, it's the subdivision, we go out there, and the time that we have to be their inspector, because these subs are just ignoring them. I know how that game works. They're ignoring them. Half of them don't speak English, anyway. The issue is, is that until we do something, they're gonna continue to do it. We saw it today when we were out there. The only way I know of doing it is keep track of the time and bill the developer.
I'm trying to recall if we have a fee schedule for that inspection and the permit criteria man.
I looked at the permit criteria man today.
Or the utility rule maybe too.
I couldn't find, I couldn't find anything addressing like, oh, existing meters, we go out and install a meter and it gets busted, and how that's.
Yeah, you know, I'll follow.
Stuck it right up our U1.
Checking that.
You know, if it was me, we need to figure out from Tony what, what we can do, but, I mean, I would look for staff to build an escalation process. If we go out there and they're, if we have to physically inspect or put man-hours, we need to bill, and send a letter saying that these issues, whatever, and if they're not taken care of, one, they have to be paid, two, the issue has to be resolved, we shut the water off, or figure out something that.
It's a cost of doing business to them.
Yeah. I mean, there has to be, they have to be held accountable, and maybe that's extreme, but there needs to be something.
Lennar has a construction department that has managers in it, that somebody needs to be the person you go to that you say, hey, you're accountable for this.
I've been in this business a long time, they will not do that. They'll send, they'll give it lip service, they'll send out an email to the primes, and the primes, whether or not they get it down to the subs that are doing the work, and that's generally what this is, the subs, they're doing the work. If they can even read it and understand it, still aren't gonna do it, because it's not fast.
But they're supposed to have their own employees on side watching this stuff.
I don't know that. I don't know that they do. I don't even know that our permit criteria, now Tyler, does our permit criteria manual require inspection of, let's say, RWA on work that they do? Are they supposed to have an inspector out there preventing this from happening? I don't think it does.
Are we talking, we're talking about vertical construction after we've accepted the system?
No, 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 no. This is in construction, their people allowing this stuff to be done that's contrary to any standard construction spec.
Prior to us accepting.
Yes.
The system. They have to pay for all that, I believe.
That's tampering.
I believe it's. For the record, Mike Tish, I, there's an easy solution, an easy fix, we can just contact Lee County, Natural Resources. If they are not putting up BMPs and keeping their sites in accordance to what they're supposed to be doing, they'll be cited by Lee County. That's easy enough. That's a phone call.
Yeah, let's start doing this.
I mean, I, I'll go out with Kenny tomorrow and look at some of this stuff, and I can have someone from Lee County over here real quick. And when these builders start getting fined, they'll, they'll turn around pretty quick.
And if Lee County doesn't respond, or?
They will. They don't mind finding people.
The trouble is, we're the ones that are getting, paying the cost. That's the problem.
And whoever there is a construction site going on, or anything, any of the lots next to it, or behind it.
Kenny, to make sure.
Oh, we're locking them out off the back. They're, we were finding instances of straight piping. We were going out there finding it, and we put an end to that, but say, as best I can do.
It's an illegal connection if it's straight piping.
It's a straight pipe.
And that's also a crime, if I believe.
Yes.
Okay, and that's something we may want to refer to law enforcement.
So stop that, we went out and just locked all the boxes where there's no construction going on, it's locked out.
You understand what they're saying, they're bypassing a meter.
And that's, there's a, and I believe it's a felony to bypass or theft of utility services, but I mean, that's something we may want to contact law enforcement when that happens, bring them out there and say it's happened, file a complaint.
We found two instances on the big two-inch meters down in Casella, where the way the yoke is set up, they have a bypass under that, and they went in through it.
Wow.
And it was just completely bypassed, and we found a bygone.
Did we notify Lennar that that was happening?
Yes.
Where's Rhonda? But, yeah, I think, again, if we believe there's an illegal connection, we should contact law enforcement also, as well as the city agencies and county agencies, as far as them putting stop work orders on the projects.
I mean, this is a great example, Chris, of a policy or procedure that needs to be drafted by staff, and we have it on file, we follow it, and.
Oh, you can't believe the pictures they're taking. We've got a book, chapter, and verse.
Bet you I could.
So our staff's doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
And the water, or water irrigation will be off starting on the 26th, everybody, the HOAs have been notified, we put it on the district website, and all the HOA presidents were notified.
I thought it was 24th. 24th to 27th?
24th to 27th.
Excuse me, okay.
I have, we are scheduled to be off on the 26th, he should be wrapped up, he is estimating two days, and we gave him just a third day, just to, just in case something comes up that it's unexpected. Twenty-sixth will be, actually will be back on. And that's pretty much all I have for right now.
Kenny, or Chris, or whoever answers, when, when Zinner came, they were talking about their, the meter software and the application, that had a lot of, a lot of functionality to it that we, we could be leveraging, and at the time, I think, they were only getting trained on a certain portion. I think some of it was in-house and some was customer-facing. Are there, is there functionality for our end-users that's available, that we're not using, or things that, that they, that they could be using, or, or anything in-house? I remember specifically, they were saying, you know, that this product can do all kinds of notification, and, and I thought there was something external, but I'm not 100%.
Well, we get alarms every day. I mean, we, we get, me and Leslie both get alarms, like a legal alarm.
I thought it was something where customers could log in and look at their.
Customer portal.
Customer portal.
I don't believe they've unveiled that.
Okay, so it's just not released? Okay.
There, there is an issue that's coming, and Kenny and I talked about it today, and that's the situation with all of the Pelican Preserve stuff coming online, that we're gonna have a massive amount next November, December, January of reuse water needs, and we're gonna be popping the 8,000 gallon per minute limit, that, I mean, that's all we can do. In fact, be surprised if we can get 8,000. But the issue is, we're gonna have to start coming down to enforcement of watering schedules. And one of the thing I asked Leslie, and she couldn't answer it, but she's gonna call Zinner and find out, we can't fine, we have no finding authority. But what we sure as heck can do is we can pass a rate change that if your, what do you call it, street address is a one, and you're watering on Thursday and Saturday, that's your two days, and you're, we catch you watering on Tuesday, instead of you getting billed at 56 cents a thousand, we bump it to $10 a thousand. You'll quickly shut your water off.
Yeah, we can do, I think we've had that conversation before, where we could do a rule change for rates.
Yes.
That's correct.
What our problem is, is that Leslie's gotta find out, can Zinner give us a report that tells us not only who's doing it and the days they're doing it, but the critical component is how much water went through when they did it, so that we can bill it. And she doesn't know that they can do that.
We can track that, but we have to manually go into the system and look at each account, it doesn't tell us.
Well, let's say, let's say I'm on, let's say I'm on June, let's say I'm on June 30th, and we get the report, and it says the Billy Bob violated it on the 9th, the 17th, and the 23rd. Okay, we know we got him. Now, can it tell us how much water he used on the 9th, the 17th, and 23rd? Well, if that's the case, then the only thing we have to do.
We can track all, anything that comes to that meter.
Then if that's the case, alls we need to do then is to generate a fee for usage of water on non-dedicated days, and start putting that on the bill, and I guarantee you the water will be curtailed.
I think Mrs. Blair, do you want to make a comment?
What if you put in new landscaping and it has to be watered?
You'd have to get a permit on a grow-in. No words of exception.
So where would you get the permit?
Here, here.
Is it a fee?
I don't see that that's anything deal.
I wouldn't imagine.
I think the, the problem.
A fee would be watering every, for 30 days straight.
I think we're getting out in the weeds on this.
The problem, the problem is, is that we don't have enough water. And we've gotta come up with something, and you can't wait till the last minute, because you, takes time to get a rule through. The other issue is, is that, and I got a question for Kenny and Tony, how do we do this on those communities that have master meter?
Ed, you're ahead of yourself, we haven't even decided to do it yet. You may, we may well, but you're way ahead of us.
I know, and that's what I get paid to do, is be thinking ahead.
Yeah, I think that, I think what might be, what might be really helpful is, once we have, once the board establishes all its priorities, we, I think a number of topics have come up over the last year or so about amendments to the utility rule and/or the schedules. We'll have a workshop just on that, so we can get all these ideas, inputs, and staff can provide coordination.
You know, before November hits.
And as an aside, the utility rule does provide, if there is an unauthorized connection, we can disconnect it, discontinue service until full payment is made for the service, calculate on proper classification, plus penalties or reimbursement, plus payment to the district for any expense incurred by the district. So whatever you all need to do when you go out there and you see an illegal connection, and you make them stop it, and whatever that staff time is, I would submit that include, that needs to be included, before we begin providing any service to that location, because it says, including administrative costs, testing, inspection. So we have the ability under the rule right now for unlawful connections, that's correct.
And this is a great example of, like, Ed, I would, I would love you to take that item and present it to Kenny and, and Chris, and have, have staff go ahead and work on it. That way, when they come here, they say, here's, here's our options, and they vetted it out, and they've even pulled you in as the supervisor sponsor.
Our key is, it can't be a fine, that's the key.
No, once again, we have, we have the ability, and there's certain circumstances to, before we even allow and provide service, to make them pay a bill.
It's an alternative rate.
Then we have the alternative rate for the improper, illegal watering.
And I think that that is, that's a good project, and that, that'll need to be worked on by staff, but I don't think we're gonna solve it here today, so.
Amen.
Do you have anything else?
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just real briefly, again, we have the ability under the rule, if anybody damages the district property, to bill them for it, and full payment and reimbursement is a condition for continuation of service. So we have all those available under our current utility rule. So, go bill them.
Sorry, I had you, called you up and then bypassed you.
Michael Tish, for the record, Public Works Manager. Just real quick, since your last meeting, Kenny and I attended training with Synergy NDS down at Fort Myers Beach for the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, FMIT, disaster response training, learned how to use some of the software, so in the event of hurricane or something, we can, we learned about some of the things that, with mutual aid, and how to actually use the software to report damage that occurs here in Gateway. Let's see, this past week also worked with our, one of our tree trimming companies to address the tree limbs along Gateway Boulevard, Griffin Drive, and Commerce Lakes Drive, who in, in advance of turning these roads over to Lee County, the, we need to meet the minimum height that they have, 15 feet, so we have a guy going out, we went out with him yesterday, and we're gonna be trimming probably 40 more limbs, you'll see them out there probably tomorrow. So recently, we've had a few issues with some of our limbs being at undesirable heights, so we're, we're addressing all those. So that should do us for the, actually, next few years with regards to tree limbs on, on those major roadways. We also have been working with Comcast and their subcontractor to, to get our new weatherbug, lightning alert on the soccer field working here. Comcast should, should have finished up, we're gonna check on it tomorrow to, to see where we're at, but that system should go online by the, the next meeting.
Hey, Mike, with the, with that system, is, does it send alerts out at the, when there is, when there's lightning within, I think you can kinda set, it's a 10-mile.
It's set for a 10-mile radius for the weatherbug, and I mean, you use the app, the app will tell you, but the, when it senses it, I mean, the alarm goes off here.
The alarm goes on, but is there any, is there any notification, whether it's text alert or an email alert, letting you know that the indicator's going on? And it might be an administrative function, I don't know.
I think it's setting up, setting up the app, actually, on your, on your phone or on the Jeter.
So you can set the alerts from your, from your device?
Correct.
And I, I have a couple different ones that, that I use depending on location, but my point is, for, for different locations within the community that have, like, our, our pool, when, when there's lightning over the pool, there's, what are they going off of? Are they basing it on the weather?
The weather, the weatherbug system at the pool, there's two different systems, so there's, there's one at the pool, and then there'll also be one here. Each, each facility has, has its own lightning detector.
Okay, and I'm just curious, why, why do we have two?
Because they, they, they over, they overlap each other, I mean, if you, if you use the, only use the pool, you could still have a lightning within, within striking distance of the soccer fields, because we're approximately a mile apart.
I mean, they're not, what are they, they might be a mile apart, right? So, okay, well, that's, my point is, are, are there other, other HOAs or anyone in the, in the community that could, that could be leveraging that, that alert system? At Stony Brook, what do we, what do we use?
At Stony Brook, in the office, and, and the guards have an app on their phones that alerts them, I think it's one of the local stations.
Okay, so my point is.
Controlled by GPS.
When, if you're using weatherbug, you, you're tied to a pin, and that pin is the actual location of where the alarm is going off. So like, I have one for JetBlue right now, so it could tell me that there's 10 miles within JetBlue, which is kinda what Mike was saying, why we have one at the pool, why we have one at the soccer field, because it's.
Separated.
Yeah, it's, it's location-specific, I'm sure the Country Club has one as well.
Yeah, Country Club has three of them.
But I'm just wondering if, if we should notify HOAs, the HOA boards, that we have this lightning indicator, and they could tie off of it. So if Stony Brook, if our security system is using a station that is greater than, than the location at the pool or here, then it may not be an accurate, accurate reading. So if, if we're paying for this, there might be, might be a reason for us to let other HOAs know that there's, you know, an additional use for it. Kathleen's here.
Weather Channel has the app, I have it on my phone, and as a matter of fact, it just buzzed a little while ago, so that, there was lightning within 10 miles of my phone, so.
And that's?
Yeah, that's, I'm just saying.
They go by GPS.
Yeah.
The Weather Channel, the Weather.
So does Wink.
That's a must, so it's.
And then one final thing, still looking into the, I know you had been asking about the water fountain at the fun park, just looking for a location to actually put it, and then after, there's a few details that need to be worked out with just the waste, you know, the water, the wastewater that, that goes down the drain, where to, you know.
Usually put in a fresh drain outside of it.
So, but we, I've got a pretty good idea where we wanna put it, and looking at that, so at some point, I'll come back to you with the.
Church asked about that Sunday, that people are coming over there and continuing to use the faucets and not shutting it off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right.
Is Stephen, Stephen gonna make any presentation, Margaret, other than, Margaret, is Stephen gonna make any presentation? Okay.
Consent agenda. Kathy, did you have anything you wanted?
B.
B, okay.
I wanna pull A.
All right. What about down here?
Nope.
Okay, Bill, since you chose A, I'll give you first.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, if you'll go to your book on, to page 12, near the bottom of that page, you'll see a block where Mr. Tinkle moved, and you'll see a second block, which were Mr. Tinkle moved to amend the prior move, motion decreasing the principal amount. Mr. Tinkle did not make that motion, I made that motion.
I thought that was true, I had that question mark on that one.
My name was under so many times, I didn't catch it.
Yeah. I'd appreciate it if that were corrected.
Absolutely will change that. Anything else?
No ma'am, that's all for me.
Okay. Kathy?
Okay, my questions were, page 20 and 21, okay? All the motions, it just says was approved, where the other times, they have a number, and there was no number, so I didn't know if that was, there was a reason for that. And if you go to the next agenda, they do have numbers for the approval rate, so.
So you wanna see the tally?
Yeah, I, I mean, there is no tally, and I don't know if there was a reason why. That was my question, just minor.
It is not minor.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, well, well, I meant it's.
It's not minor, and it oughta, it oughta have an indication as to the number of folks that voted in favor.
Right.
And/or opposed.
Thank you. Thank you. That was, that was the only question I had.
And I had, just, your question was one of them, and I had already changed it on this to go back to, there was a couple scrivners and a misspelling of Jim Brand's last name, and on page 18, I wanted them to add on line 67, preserve to the Pelican Preserve Pond Irritation Project, so that it didn't say Pelican Pond, because I'm not sure 10 years from now, people would know what that meant, so. That was just minor additions. So, with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the changes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a five to zero vote tally.
Let the record reflect.
I'm sorry, I couldn't help it. Find my agenda. P-PAC report.
Phil Meesey, representing P-PAC, you have our written report, I'd like to highlight a couple of items on there. One of them is the signs that are, were installed along Pelican Preserve Boulevard by WCI, Lennar. They are large and obtrusive, and most of, virtually all the residents of Pelican Reserve would like them removed, and we question whether Lennar, WCI had the right to put those signs on what appears to be CDD property.
Is it common area, Phil?
It's, it's the area between the road and the sidewalk, Ed.
Com- common area.
Well, not common area, it's a roadway.
Roadway.
It's actually the roadway, yes. It appears to be within.
We, we had a similar situation at Gateway Greens.
Yeah.
And have you checked your covenants to see if there's a release against the declarant? Because that's what we found out.
Well, here, the, it started with, obtained a series of emails, David Caldwell and from Michael, with regards that where WCI was asserting that the roadway tract Pelican Reserve Boulevard is subject to the community declaration. Now, the community declaration for, there's two of them for Pelican Reserve, the town center declaration, the community declaration, they have multiple supplements, multiple amendments. I did it basically because I had a lot of the materials from the prior Tiberio and Valentino easement issue on the catch basins, I reviewed the supplements that I had, and the amendments that I had, and the declaration that I have up until the time the district acquired fee simple title to Pelican Reserve Boulevard, this section in question plus larger, other portion, in my opinion, and I have a copy, if anybody wants to be bored to tears, in my opinion, based upon that initial cursory review.
Is that thick?
These are the legal descriptions of the very, of the very supplement, that that portion of Pelican Reserve Boulevard is not subject, in my opinion, to the community declaration. So the idea of the declarant having the ability is, in my opinion, nonexistent. They did not reserve any rights in the deed, the deed does not reference the community declaration. And Michael sent an email to David Caldwell saying, please provide the evidence you have to support your assertion.
You're talking about our Michael?
Yeah, Michael Tish.
Okay.
Is subject to the community declaration, that was just sent out last week, I think, Mike?
No response. Solves that problem?
Yeah, so that, in my, once again, I have copies, if anybody wants.
So that means we're gonna be getting a letter from Pavey's Law Firm telling us something else?
No, yeah, once again, I'd like to, I'd like to see that, with their belief, with their belief for that.
Anyway, we are, we are concerned with that and what's happening with regard to it. Another issue, I may be throwing a monkey wrench into a previous discussion here, but there are other issues that we have with the conveyance of the roads in Pelican Reserve in the Cypress Grove area that relate to safety and also relate to landscaping, that's a mess.
Signage.
And signage. And we have surveyed the area, we just prepared a report that was sent to Chris today with a request that it be placed on the agenda for the next meeting, and I'm not sure, I'll be frank with you, I'm not certain whether these issues come into play in the road conveyance that was discussed earlier, but if they do, if they do, we have a problem with those, with some of that.
How, what does our manual say on these non, what I call, utility-related issues? It seems like they just fell through a hole.
Through the crack.
They fell through the cracks.
Yeah, and in fact, we were, we were never, we were never asked to even look at them.
So how do we address that, Tony?
My opinion is that if we're being asked to accept fee simple title to property, that we have the ability to make sure the property is in good shape, just as a typical transaction, and that's.
Was there catchwords, you know, when, when you write these things, they'll go blank, 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 and related appurtenances?
Well, they, they come with it.
Is there anything like that that allows us to interpret that it is inclusive of landscaping, signage, and, what was the other one? Sidewalks?
Sidewalks. In one case, lighting.
And lighting.
The sidewalks are, the sidewalks are permanently affixed to the real estate, so they come with, it's kinda like when you get a deed to your house, it doesn't say lot so-and-so, block such-and-such, and the house located there on, it just says, you get a deed to the described property because the house is permanently affixed to the property.
Well, we're talking about changing the manual, obviously, to address these issues, but in the interim, what do we do? Do we have the authority? How do we tie those amenities to approval?
Well, my opinion, once again, my opinion is, it's a matter of accepting the deed to those roadway segments. In my opinion, we need to be comfortable that the facilities and improvements, including the landscaping, are in good condition before we accept title to the roadway, because we're accepting title to the roadway and all of its improvements, the landscaping, the signage, the sidewalks.
Is there anything in there that allows you to tie, does roadway, you're reaching when you're pulling in those other ones to be inclusive of those, is there anything that's in there that allows us to do that?
No, once again, just the typical real estate transaction, if I'm buying a house and it has trees, bushes, flowers, I'm buying the lot, that's what I'm buying, and all the improvements that are on. And it doesn't have to specifically detail all them, but I wanna make sure they're all in good shape and condition. I don't believe you have to have a separate rule requiring that, they're asking us to take title to it.
Can we continue, Phil?
I don't know how we do that.
Yes.
Yeah. So that obviously is of concern to us and we, we have pointed out the issues we have, some of, some of which are safety issues, which we think are things that.
You've made Chris aware of them.
Well, yes, we've just given him, we've given, we brought some of these up multiple times to Tony. Now we've given Chris a complete report on what we believe needs to be covered.
Phil, are you, are you saying that the work was not built in accordance with the plans and specs?
No, Ed, I guess we are not.
You're not going that far?
Not going that far. Not going that far.
Yeah, I think the issue on landscaping is it may have been installed properly, but it was installed four or five years ago.
Wasn't maintained.
And they're completely allowed to deteriorate. In fact, some of it, they just ripped out. They just left blank spaces there. It's like, it's like a desert out there.
Well, the one, the one I was trying to get you to say is, safety is a real touchy one. If the plans and specifications called for what they did.
Yes.
Safety's kind of hard to argue after the fact. We approved it already. That, that's my point.
Well, I, you know, I, we are concerned.
Okay.
That the board is taking on a couple of things that are, are true safety issues, whereas somebody, there's one particular one where somebody, somebody's going to get killed.
And you, you have, Chris is aware of that.
That's correct.
None of that has come before us yet to be approved.
Not unofficially.
So it's on the horizon.
It's on the horizon. That's correct.
That'll be a fun one.
And what else did you want to make, take?
The other, the other thing that, you know, I wanted to mention to kind of highlight was the, I guess those are, we're working on our budget and are looking for your. We are concerned about preserve, the ownership of the preserve. There is some question about.
There's no question. I don't believe there's any question about the ownership.
Yeah.
It's an issue about who had the responsibility under a permit.
For a permit, yeah.
Under a permit, that's all.
Yeah. So I think, I think that covers it.
Thank you. I'm going to have a five-minute break before we do the budget.
Oh, thank you.
I need a seven-thinning stretch.